All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. The meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency on Tuesday, May 26 at 7:00 PM. This is our regular session, so we'll have a call to order if we can have a roll call. Mayor Skilman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Present.
Councilmember Deloso?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Councilmember Landman?
Here.
All present. Thank you. And if you could all rise and join me for the Pledge of Legions. Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So move on to approval of minutes and notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and or adopted under these agendas. We're moving to -- do we need to approve them separately since -- okay. So we'll first ask for a motion to approve the minutes from May 12. Move to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please, let the record show, it was a 5-0 vote in favor of approval. Then we'll move on to approval of minutes from our special meeting on May 19. Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do I have all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record reflect, it's a 5-0 vote in favor of approving the minutes. So move on to housekeeping items. So I'll ask our city clerk, Tammy Taylor, to read through those, please.
Thank you, Mayor. For the benefit of everyone in attendance, please observe the following. Silence electronic devices, including cell phones. Audience members are advised that the chamber and hallways carry sound, so please keep conversations to a minimum or conduct them outside the building. Photographs or video recordings using tripods or other means that would be distracting are to be taken only from the designated media area along the west wall of the chamber. Members wishing to -- as long as, excuse me, the south wall of the chamber. Members of the public wishing to address the council are asked to complete a separate speaker card for each item. Speaker cards are located on the table outside the entrance to the chamber. Place the completed speaker cards in the designated tray located by the city clerk. When their name is announced, speakers should come forward to the podium and direct their comments to the city council.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Berge.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. It's nice to see such a great big turnout here again. Very small turnout again for our city council meetings. Regarding these housekeeping rules, I think for the benefit of the public, I think it's worthy of mentioning that we have no housekeeping items, we have no housekeeping rules that were ever approved by any city council in this town. And I've mentioned this and brought this up many times over the last couple of years. I can't seem to get any city council members to sit down and have a little talk about this, give me a call, share emails. But the fact is, all indications are that these housekeeping items that have been changed several times over the last couple of years without any council action, without any public input, are void on their face. They have no force in effect. They're made up in behind closed doors somewhere, probably with Diane Thompson and her staff, who dictated to the council what they should do rather than the other way around. And I think it's shameful, because I've asked so many times with a compassionate plea to bring this up in the light of day, put this on it an agenda, like they do in every other city, as far as I understand, in the country, and make a policy of what you feel public conduct should be all about in these chambers. Public conduct, which is what you're trying to dictate here with these housekeeping rules, for the most part, and in doing so, asking people to fill out a speaker card is a violation of the Brown Act. It's in the documents that were provided for you when you became a council member. It's in the documents that were provided to you at the League of California Cities. It's been advised to you by city attorney, but you continued to require it. And that should be optional, and you should be asking people that they have a right to be anonymous if they feel that they want to be anonymous, and they do not have to fill out a speaker card. I never fill out a speaker card, you know? Don't need to. I think it's a waste of paper, it's a waste of your resources, and I think you're all probably pretty professional enough to recognize a hand that goes up in the air in the audience. You know, it's kind of old fashioned, kind of low carbon footprint. But the fact is, I would like to see the council actually come up with a policy and something that you can be proud of. You know, we elected you as our local officials to make policy, and for some reason, this is one that you've been either caught flat-footed on or you're so embarrassed about that someone has actually called you on it and corrected you, that you don't have the adult capability to do the right thing and bring it back. You have no indication of just apologizing and saying, you know, "Mr. Berge, we're sorry we've put you through this the last couple of years. You deserve a decent answer, but you know what? Since you've ran against us each during election time, that's never going to happen."
All right, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to make a comment about the housekeeping items as they were read? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment on that item. And we'll move on to announcements. The City of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open-for-Business Program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Ronert Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. The Friends of the Library Book Sale takes place the first weekend in June. All of the events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121, or visit sonomalibrary.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday of each month, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 PM, and by appointment. For more information, call (794) 0304. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati Community Alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixol.com. The Kattati Farmers Market starts June 4 and runs every Thursday, there we go, through August 27, starting at 4:30 PM in La Plaza Park. The 35th Annual Kattati Jazz Festival happens on June 21 in La Plaza Park. This free event will have food, arts, and crafts, and live jazz music. Now we'll move on to our honorary mayor, so Cameron Fernandez. If you could please come forward.
Good evening. It's nice to see you guys again. Living in Kattati, my whole life, it's really fun to be able to walk downtown and see all the beautiful structures and many people. Well, yeah. And to be able to sit in at Pete's Coffee and watch chickens play while eating coffee. Or not eating, drinking coffee. I like how you can go to, at the park, see children play and see like festivals and events happening there, and it's really fun. And I like to go on bike rides with my family and see cool things and just have like fun adventures.
So you're all -- okay, I just didn't want to interrupt, just making sure. Okay, well, thank you for sharing all of that. Those are some wonderful aspects about living in Kattati, so I will go down the line. Councilmember Landman?
Well, Honorary Mayor Fernandez, welcome back. Good to see you again. Loved your comments. What I'm happy to hear is I think there's a lot of things that a lot of us like about this community. And I'm glad to see that cuts across ages, generations, a lot of different things. Be able to walk downtown through our small neighborhoods, that balance is important. It's something that I think we all share and something we all agree on. And I think that's something that's rare in life, something that most people agree on. That's a good thing, it has to be a good thing. Particularly, I loved when you mentioned the chickens over at Pete's. Everybody loves them. I actually got a letter from a young person who was concerned that they were going to do okay last year, and I wrote them, "They've been there for what, 30 years, I believe now, and they're doing just fine." And as far as eating coffee at Pete's, you can get it about that strong there, so you were pretty right on with that. Thank you very much.
All right, Vice Mayor Moore?
Cameron, welcome back. You were talking about the different festivals in Kattati. Have you been part of or participated in the Kids' Day festivals?
Uh-uh.
It comes up every July, it's right after, typically right after the 4th of July, and it's a wonderful event. They have stuff for all ages. There's even opportunities to volunteer if you're interested. But you should check that out, that's one of our keynote festivals, along with some of the others, like the accordion and the jazz and Oktoberfest. But, thank you.
I'll have to go and see what it's like.
You'll be pleasantly surprised.
And I think you and your brother would both like that we throw candy at everybody who watches the parade, so, just saying. And it's going to be on July 11th this year. Councilmember Harvey?
Well, welcome back. Everybody already talked about the festivals. I do hope that you'll try and get involved in the Kids' Day. They're always looking for volunteers, especially to help with the games and stuff. And actually, sitting behind you are a couple of the members of the Chamber of Commerce, so I'm sure if you give your contact information to them, they can hook you up. But it's really a lot of fun, and I'm glad you and your family enjoy being here, and we hope you'll introduce your family to us before you leave. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Deloso?
Cameron, great to have you back and great to see your family again. Yeah, I too, I love the fact that you talked about the chickens, because outside of Sebastopol, I don't know of any other town, you can go and have coffee somewhere and there's chickens right around you. And it was quite interesting, the other night, when I was driving in there, it was almost closing time, but it looked like it was closing time, because there was like five or six roosters and hens, and they were all lined up on the fence, like, "Well, we're done working now, so that's it, we're going home tonight." So it's very unique that way. And like everybody's saying, there's a lot of opportunities with different festivals, and you don't have to just volunteer by yourself, bring your friends with you, and there's always a lot of fun stuff to do, plus you get to participate in whatever the event is. So with something like Kids' Day coming up, July 11, just kind of keep that in mind, there might be some fun stuff you guys could do. And then, are you, I think I asked you this last time, so I'm going to ask again, because I can't remember, do you have to do community service hours yet?
Well, you can over the summer.
Oh, you can?
Yeah.
And so that'll count towards the stuff in high school? So there you go. You know, you could be, think about it, you could be a freshman and, "Well, I'm done with my 40 hours, I'm good for four years, I don't have to volunteer anymore." Not true, but something to keep in mind. But great to see you again, thanks for coming back, appreciate it.
Okay, so I wanted to know, do you want to introduce your family members, and then we can come up for a photo if they'd like?
My mom, Alicia, Mason, my little brother, my stepdad Kyle, and my grandpa, Rick.
Very good, all right. So I will come down and give you your certificate, as well as your city PIN, and I'll ask the rest of the council to come down with me, so we can take photos.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And like I told you guys last time, I know it's a school night, so you're welcome to stick around as long as you'd like, or you can go home whenever you need to, if you've got homework or anything like that. So don't worry about, just sneak out whenever you need to. Yes, Mr. Berge?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, for there to be an honorary mayor, I think it's, at least it's important to, that the designation come from honorable people and honorable city council members. And I've watched this program over the last, what, 16, 17 years now, off and on, and I find a little disconnect when I think about the honorable mayor position with honorable city council members. I just, I say that from real experience, that 99% of the requests that these children have brought forth to the council over the years have been ignored, or made light of, or made excuses for. And the few kids who've come forward and challenged the city council with some good questions, some independent thought, some critical thinking skills, you know, they've been made light of, or they've been mocked, and kind of made fun of, that they're, you know, "Well, you're smarter than we are," and so forth, you know? And in a difficult situation, I can understand how statements like that can come out. But the fact is, you've had some very intelligent kids come forward with less than stellar things to say about Kattati, and those are comments in rare moments where that was a real opportunity for the council to take it to the next level and teach some real leadership skills, and I kind of feel like you dropped the ball on that many times. I don't think you're really teaching the kids, you know, what you mean when you say you have no money, because evidently, you've got a lot of money for a lot of other things other than for the kids. You raised a lot of money last year with Measure G, not much of it going towards public safety, unfortunately, but as promised, but I don't see anything going towards the kids. You keep raising taxes and fees, and I think it's time we stop fooling these kids and their families, that they're going to come forward here, make honest requests, and they're going to see something at the end of the day. I don't think you're really teaching leadership here. I think you're teaching these kids how to follow, how to be complacent, how to make excuses, how to kick the can down the road, and these are not the qualities I think we need in future leaders in Kattati. I think it's something that you guys have kind of done over the years, and never really asked what this program is really all about. You never voted on it, that I can ever remember. It's something you just kind of keep doing, like a habit. And I think it's time that you stop and think what you're doing, explain to the public why you're doing it, and what are the kids really getting out of it, other than, you know, a dog and pony show here from a council who makes excuses and is not being entirely honest. I mean, just the county and the City of Kattati spent $3 million on a sheep field, a sheep pasture across the street. $3 million! And I'd like to see a few bucks go towards the kids, other than being able to pet some sheep through some wired fencing.
Okay, thank you for that. Pass the three minutes. And so if there's anybody else who would like to make a comment on the honorary mayor program? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment. And we'll move on to presentations. This evening, we have a presentation by the Chamber of Commerce.
Hello. Not that tall. Okay, I'm Jamie Brady with the Kattati Chamber of Commerce. So I first just wanted to start off by saying thank you to the council, and definitely to all of your staff that's here for your continued support of the chamber. So I wanted to just give you kind of an update on what's been happening this year. We've had another busy year, so, surprise, that's what happens when you get all of us volunteers together. So this year, we have hired a new staff person, hired an administrative coordinator, his name is Rick, I don't know if you've had a chance to meet him, but he's wonderful. And we took advantage of his new energy and that new position, and we redid our office, so check it out if you get a chance. It's a much more inviting visitor center. Our members and board of directors were very happy to release the new publication of the Kattati Community Guide. So that was sent direct mail to every resident that was here in Kattati, so hopefully you all have received that this last week. And the marketing committee that we have has really been focusing on different social media outlets to promote, find different ways to promote our businesses and what's happening with them, and to help spread the word through that. And also, we launched a new logo and a new website. So our website was really designed to be more interactive and make it more user-friendly for us, the administrators, so when we get real-time updates from our businesses, that we can actually add that to that website right away to get it out to the public. So we have been working on that. The Economic Development Task Force really continues to send a representative to our more regional meetings in regards to our city, chamber, county, and state in regards to economic matters. And we are continuing to work with the Sonoma County Economic Development Board and the City of Kattati, Vicki's our representative now, to do a business visitation program. So it's a great collaboration, it's been really successful. The feedback that we've received from the business community that have, we've gone to visit them, really appreciate getting an education on the services that all of us can provide, and then just a chance to teach us about, a little bit more about their business, so then we can go out and spread the word for them. Obviously, our events committee is busier than ever, just continuing to provide free community events. So last year, and we're gearing up again this year, we did the 30th or 4th Annual Kattati Jazz Festival, our 22nd Annual Kattati Kids' Day, the 8th Annual Oktoberfest, and we all help celebrate our holiday festivities together. So, and almost monthly, we see each other at a mixer, ribbon cutting, or a quarterly speaker series. So just, I wanted to say thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you. So we'll start on the other end, see if we have any questions. So, okay. Any questions on this side?
Comments, no questions, I can hold the council out there.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for your presentation. So I'll bring it back to the council, well, let's see. Do we, I want to, I'll bring it back to us for comments, and then do I need to open up public comment as well? Okay, perfect. All right. Any comments on this side? Okay. Councilmember Landman, you're up.
Backing back quickly. Well, just in general, and perhaps we could comment more after public comments, certainly, because I'm interested to hear what's said. But first of all, congratulations in your work. I would agree, particularly the upgrading and streamlining and modernization of the office, I think is a big plus. One thing that always struck me is it's important, most chambers run something that can act as a first-line visitor center. It's pretty close to the center of town with the signage, it's pretty easy to find, and it's important, number one, to have that staffed, and two, to have something that acts as a good emissary, a first contact for the City of Kattati. And I think you made a big upgrade in doing that, and that's good for all of us, so I support that. Continue to like the Community Guide, I think that's a good thing. I've seen them before, but then again, I've been here almost 30 years. For new people, I think there's a lot of value in that, and I'm glad that you guys have the time and the energy to put that together. Lastly, websites, usually, I'm not terribly excited about that. I have to admit that, that's the truth. It's a modern day, we're supposed to do that, but what I do like about this is actually having something that works closer to a real-time update for your businesses, that's a big upgrade too, because I think that's important, and that's usually something that's lost, especially with small organizations trying to run a website. Thing isn't up to date, and if it isn't, it's not valuable, people don't use it. So I think you've done well this year, feel it's a good investment, and thank you for your work.
All right. Did you want to comment, or?
I do want to make a comment.
Yes, Vice Mayor Moore?
I think that the direction that the Chamber of Commerce has gone is wonderful. I think the outreach to the business community on a personal touch, and going out there with our Community Development Director is a, just a touch that is needed and really reaches out to the business community and to get them more involved in there. I think the media outreach is great, it's fantastic. Even though we're a small town and we do see a lot of people, a lot of people don't have the opportunity to come to these particular events and these meetings, so reaching out to them, I think is fantastic. I often think that when you have a thriving community, typically you have a thriving Chamber of Commerce, and they work hand-in-hand, and I think you guys are doing a tremendous job, and especially some of the information coming from the Sonoma County Economic Development Board and things like that. So keep up the great work.
Okay, so we'll open up to public comment. Is there anybody who'd like to comment on the presentation by the Chamber of Commerce? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment. And thank you very much for your presentation and your continued good work, really do appreciate it. So now we'll move on to approval of the final agenda. Are there any changes this evening?
I would like to request flipping agenda, regular agenda items five and six, so six would appear first and five after, because we have guests here for that item.
Sure. No, that makes sense. So with that change, we'll approve the final agenda. So now we'll open it up to citizens business. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar, or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any items not listed on the agenda during this period. Comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for items on the consent calendar. So with that, I'll open it up. I've got a speaker card from Teresa Eaton. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I was here the end of March concerning the problem of our creek behind the Mobile Home Park, Sierra. The only person that suggested something to the city manager was Councilman Landman, and I haven't heard anything from any of you people. Marion Coughlin, who came down with me, is ill tonight, she wasn't able to attend. She had received an email from Damian Obed saying that they couldn't find the survey. Well, if you can't find the survey, there might be two choices. You either do another survey, or you clean up the creek and you attach the amount of money it costs to the park owner on his taxes. It would be nice if we could have some kind of correspondence. I know I haven't received any, and I did challenge any of you to come over and take a look, and I don't know if any of you did. So I'll leave it at that, and I will be back if I don't hear anything, or if we don't get any kind of information. Also, I just want to make a quick comment on the meeting you had the other night about the housing element. Because I was kind of taken off guard, I thought there would be some time to communicate about the work that was done. I want to know if the mobile home parks are counted as low-income. If they are, they can't be, because we do not have the deed to the property, we only have rental. So that can't be counted in as low-income housing in Kattati. Also, I was kind of sorry that nothing was mentioned in the housing element about the workforce housing that a lot of communities are proposing to build for teachers and EMTs and professional people that are not able to buy a $400,000 house, let alone any of us for that matter, except, well, if you have a good job, I guess. Okay, that's all I want to say.
Okay, thank you. And did you leave your contact information with the city clerk last time, so that we could email?
Well, Tammy, that's my email address.
Okay, terrific, thank you for that. And I don't have any other speaker cards, so yes, Mr. Berge?
Counsel, I've been following this issue with Teresa Eaton and her plea for some city responsibility, and I think it's absolutely shameful that nobody has gotten back with her. Nobody can take the time to go out and knock on her door and inspect the situation. I mean, it really, you're really dropping the ball here. This is a real boneheaded maneuver. This woman came forward honestly and pleaded with you, and most of you don't have the time of the day to give to this woman. You know, the arrogance is mind-boggling. I have here in my hand a few of the last, most recent editions of the Community Voice newspaper, and as if you probably noticed as I did, there are no stories in here about Kattati. There are no letters to the editor from people in Kattati. It's almost like Kattati fell off the map here with this newspaper. But Mr. Deloso says, you know, "We have a city newspaper, we have the Community Voice." And I beg to differ. It's a newspaper that is shared between three communities, and, you know, ever since Dave Williams has left town, we have like a news blackout, you know? No pun intended, but the fact is, we have no coverage of Kattati here. And we had a Kattati newspaper at one time, we had the Kattati Independent. And we had a, we had a Cattati newspaper at one time, we had the Cattati Independent, and an offer was given to each and every one of you to write and write off into the newspaper with editorials and articles, free space and so forth, and none of you took me up on that offer. You know, what a missed opportunity to spread the gospel of your progressivism and your liberalism and what you're doing here in town for the betterment of the community, and you just dropped the ball. You had every opportunity. Here's where the left and the right could have came together, educated the community, and you hadn't, and you just couldn't do it. Just either lazy and incompetent, or you just want to keep people in the dark. A news blackout here in Cattati about what's going on here. And then we have a police workshop here at the police station a few weeks ago with the district attorney. Meet the district attorney! We come to the meeting that night, it's finally opened up to public comment and public question. I asked the police chief, you know, a question, and the mayor couldn't help but butt in and try to answer the que-- oh, yes, yes you did, you remember? Okay, you butt in, you interrupted the chief and I asked him a question, and I would just ask you, if I'm at a public workshop and I ask one of the city employees a question, I would ask, I would like for you, you could just be quiet. You know, this is not, you know, you're not representing the police chief here, you know, you're not representing the district attorney's office. If I wanted to ask the woman a question or the staff a question, I would just appreciate it. You will have the same opportunity I will. You don't have to run, you know, divergence forum. It's very irritating. If I want to expose the incompetence of a city staff member, please allow the citizens to do that. I pay my taxes religiously. And then, Mr. Landman, I made reference to a raccoon truck last meeting I was at, that was sarcasm, sir. You know, something that Mr. Deloso has been kind enough to share with us, little sarcasm.
Okay, we're at the end of three minutes.
Do you have another little bit more time, ma'am?
No, I think you're good.
Like some of the other, some of the other people?
They ask in advance, actually, so you can have a seat. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to make a comment during Citizens Business? All right, seeing none, I'll close Citizens Business. Thank you. And now we'll ask for direction on future agenda items. Does anybody on the council have any direction this week? Yes?
Sure. I know we brought this up before, but the only reason I'm bringing it back up is that I believe State Assembly Member Levine has, I think, introduced a bill. It's the, that smoking ordinance with shared housing or shared rooms, shared walls, can't remember, there's shared something. And so I have a copy of that ordinance and some additional information, so, and I'm not trying to rush it through, but I know we've been talking about it for some time, so maybe I can get with staff, I can get with you and share that information and just see if we can move that forward to a future agenda item at some point in time. But I do have some more information, I wasn't sure if you were privy to it.
Yep, that'd be great.
Is that it for?
Yeah, that was it for me, I'm sorry.
Anything? No, it's okay, I just wanted to make sure. Yes, Councilwoman Harvey?
Could we make a comment on the Citizens Business comments?
Sure, I suppose, since we're right behind it.
Okay. So Damian, would it be possible for you to work with Ms. Eaton and kind of let us know what's going on there? I'm not sure exactly what the situation is and whether or not we can or can't do anything or whether it's a private, private issue or not, so I would like to understand that a little bit more.
Sure, yeah. We also received an email from her today on the housing element questions.
Okay.
So we'll be getting back to her on those as well.
Okay. Thank you. Sure. Councilwoman Landman?
Well, I have two things. I'll start with this since this dovetails right into what Councilmember Harvey said. I do understand that you did get back, at least to let them know that you weren't able to find a survey, but I also kind of understand why that might be a somewhat dissatisfying answer as such, and I wonder if we could just take one more pass and take a look and get a better sense of what the problem is and what part may touch us and what we, even if it isn't part of ours, if there's something. And if we can't find out where the survey is, what the responsibility is, then what we can do about it, maybe? And I appreciate that you've started that process, but at the same time, for pokes waiting on the inside, it seems like a long time. So if we could make one more effort towards that, I think that would be beneficial. And I'm just going to ask, I know this is on the agenda for this year, but I wonder if you had a sense of when we might see the downtown traffic study agenda question come before us, the truck route question?
Shortly. You know, we, like, like all these things, they seem to turn into research projects, so.
Yeah, yeah.
We almost completed that research project and...
Yeah, and I understand it's on me. I just thought I'd ask, so I had a general sense of it was going to be next quarter or longer or whatever, so that's helpful to me. It sounds like it's relatively imminent, so we'll cross our fingers and hope it doesn't turn into too much more of a research project than originally planned. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I'd expect the next couple of months, for sure, the latest.
And Vice Mayor Moore?
I did have a couple of questions regarding the mobile home and the abatement or the cleanup of the creek and the potential to bill the park owner on that. Back when I was on the rent appeals board, within that provision for the rent control, there were, there were areas that a landlord could fix or mitigate a situation, and then the landlord would take and spread out that capital cost outlay to all of the tenants and/or, in this case, mobile home park residents. I'm not sure that the existing mobile home rent control ordinance allows for anything like that right now, I'm not familiar with that. I know it was a different hybrid when it came in after the original rent control ordinance was repealed, so that might be something to consider on that. And then I just, I just wanted to make a comment regarding being lazy and incompetent. I think we all work very hard on this city council and I really take umbrage in that comment that we don't do a lot for the city and that we're not concerned with the citizens. We are concerned with the citizens. Five of us are not going to respond to an email directed to the city. Typically, we're going to have it go through the city manager. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. So we've got two ideas for future agenda items, and we'll move on to the consent calendar item, which is number four, designation of signatures for orders for payment of monies, wire transfer services, and access for safe deposit box. So first I will see, are there any comments on the consent calendar item? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment, and I'll see if there's a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, please let the record show, there's a 5-0 vote in favor of the consent calendar item, number four. Now we'll move on to the regular agenda. We're going to flip-flop and start with item number six, as requested, which is a review of the Community Facilities District Fiscal Impact Study. And for that, I will turn to our city manager, Damian Obed.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I have a guest with me tonight, Nathan Perez, with Tau Sig and Associates, and he'll be giving a presentation in a moment, but I, just to introduce the topic, we, over the last, well, gosh, I mean, over the last six, seven, eight years, we've been evaluating all sorts of ways to, you know, to work more efficiently and look at our cost structure and, and this is one of the, one of the outgrowths of that, of that effort, you know? In addition to all the cost-cutting that I think everyone's aware of already. But this is looking at not any existing development within the city, but looking at new development. So when new houses get built or new business, you know, new commercial development happens, I'm looking at the fiscal impact of those types of activities, just to make sure that, to make sure that moving forward, that we've evaluated the cost structure of new development and we understand how that impacts the city both negatively or positively, looking at the revenues and the expenses associated with new development. And the fiscal impact study does exactly that. And fiscal impact study is, is a way to evaluate the feasibility of something called the Community Facilities District. So if, so basically, from a fiscal perspective, you look at the, for new development, you look at the net revenue that you get from that development and then the service cost to serve that development after it's built. And if you have a negative net balance, basically, that means that service costs are higher than the revenues generated from any particular type of development. And a CFD is something that has been, it's increasingly common within the state and many of the surrounding communities in Sonoma County, in fact, have, have them and are creating new ones. And I think one of the reasons why is because it's pretty broad in its application in terms of the things that a CFD is applicable for. We have some existing structures in the city already, like lighting and landscape assessment districts. Those are very narrow in scope, as the name implies, they're for lighting and landscaping, but that's really a very small part of the general fund in terms of what the general fund supports. So some of our bigger costs are related to, you know, stormwater issues and road maintenance and public safety, and CFDs are applicable for any of those kinds of things, including other things such as recreation programs and, you know, other kind of general fund-supported type programs. When, when the analysis was done, I don't mean to steal all Nathan's thunder here, but, yeah, it seems like he's enjoying the discussion too, so. When we did it, we, we used the downtown specific plan as the basis for the analysis because it, A, it represented sort of the type of development that we're looking at going forward with sort of a mix of commercial and residential. And also, it had been vetted by the community and adopted by the council. And so the, the moving parts, so to speak, were, were well-vetted, and it makes a fiscal analysis more meaningful than taking something like a general plan where you have a lot more that's still conceptual and less vetted on a more specific basis like a specific plan is. So that's why we use that. And so the net outcome of that analysis was that, was that residential development has a, has a net negative impact, and that's not unusual. It's pretty, it's pretty common throughout the state. Commercial development has a net positive impact, again, that's not unusual. That's, it's pretty typical, a pattern that other communities see in the state. And I will say, the fiscal impact study, like I said, was just an initial study, it's for information only, there's no action tonight that the council's being asked to take. It's just purely a first cut at, this is a concept, this is what it looks like. And there's a lot of, a lot of steps that would be needed if a concept like this were moved forward. And the short version of that is that if you have a new, say, new residential development come forward, there's a series of steps where that residential developer would opt to annex, create and annex into a Community Facilities District to fund those type of, you know, street maintenance, public safety, or the portion of it. And I should be clear that it doesn't, it's not meant to displace existing funding sources, it's merely to cover the gap in cost between what that, say, new subdivision pays versus what the actual cost to pave the roads and keep the lights lit and maintain the parks actually are. So with that incredibly long lead in, I will, I'll introduce Nathan Perez, and he has a slideshow, he'll go over some of the finer-grain details.
That was phenomenal. Let me see if I can get this right first.
The projector's covered as well. And the projector's covered. You've got a...
I have a... Do you pop it in? All right. Always trying to be prepared. Everest, uh...
We'll, we'll take a pause while we have experienced technical difficulties.
Bean is good, right?
Well, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Nathan Perez. Sometimes with my name, but you're welcome to call me whatever you like. I'm with the firm David Housing and Associates. We specialize in public finance and economic consulting. I'm based out of San Francisco. We're a statewide firm, we have, now we have four offices in California. Been doing this for about 30 years, not the first, I've been doing it about 10 years. And we work vast, vast majority of our clients, our public agencies, cities, counties, water districts, school districts. We do occasionally represent developers as well, so I like to think we understand sort of both sides of the coin. So without further ado, and Damian, thank you for that introduction. So I think this will go a bit more smoothly and get it working. Well, let's just try this. There we go. I'll just understand. So, yeah, a little, a little bit of background about our firm, and you're welcome to... Welcome to revisit this later. California, Texas, New Mexico, and Washington. We tend to work in states west of the Mississippi. Why? They tend to have unique tax restructures. What does that mean in California? Prop 13. Everything that sort of came post Prop 13, we're all sort of dealing with it, for veteran forums. So tonight is really, the old genesis of the discussion tonight really is Prop 13. The money that's taken away and how we have to sort of fix that gap that Damian referenced. So our firm has done close to about 600 of these studies now. I personally project managed now 125 of them in multiple states, so a good bit of experience in fiscal and economic studies and also the, sort of the outcome of that, which is the Community Facilities District to fix, to possibly fix the fiscal impact that we identified. So what is a fiscal impact study? So we were hired, uh, probably about 18 months ago by the city to sort of, you know, look at this. Again, tonight is just informational, educational, a workshop, so to speak, and to really sort of help the city get a better grasp of what, where you are and what new development is doing to the city general fund. It's not uncommon for cities all over California, rich, poor, rural, urban, to have structural budget deficits. Not, not trying to really go there, we all know costs are going in one direction and wherever those are coming from, OPE, pensions, you know, we all understand that, and revenues, especially if you look at the last five years, certainly don't seem to be keeping up. So the gap, if there is a gap, it's growing, if there isn't, the census is coming. So I am very, very busy, busy guy. So what we did, and Damian referenced the downtown specific plan, was we don't like looking at general plans just by themselves because there's a lot of sort of vagaries. We're looking at acres, and we're looking at ag land, and we're looking at mixed use just as a category. There's not a project, there's not a sense of what's actually going around. And so working, working with Damian, working with Vicki, we sort of looked at the downtown specific plan as a stem, as a sort of, not a very real plan, but as sort of a hypothetical project that might work for this area, and we evaluate it. What do we do specifically when we look at the fiscal? We look at, as Damian noted, whether the revenues generated by that project, if you sort of put a dome over it, cover the cost. And that's sometimes called fiscal neutrality, as you see in that third bullet point. Some cities call it no-debt expense, you know? There are costs associated with a project, but are the revenues covering? It's not, it's not no-cost, it's just that the costs are being covered, so. What a fiscal impact study is not, I like to throw this in there because it's just to sort of get out in front of some questions. It's not a budget document, I can't tell you how to spend money between departments. I mean, I can, but that's not, this doesn't work. So we're not, we're not allocating money necessarily to the individual departments, and it is, it is sort of macro, macroeconomic in a sense. The third bullet point, it is not a, it is, the fiscal impact study, which you've been provided, which is a sort of a thick, very boring document, is in itself not a strategy to fix the gap? We're going to talk about that later, it's just an analysis. So it's a fiscal impact study and then sort of discussion of a CFD. They are, they are very much linked, but they are, they are somewhat separate, so. Just a little bit, and you guys please jump, jump in at any time, I know the notes can get a bit dry, so. What do we look at? We look at revenues on one side, we look at costs on the other. There's really two ways to do that, and sort of let's pick one side of the ledger, revenues. Multiplier, multipliers are case, though. Now, multipliers, which is, you really read the bullet point in the middle, it's really a fancy way of talking percentage increases. If you add 10% to your population, a lot of your revenues are going to increase by 10%. I mean, that's just sort of intuitive. Certain, certain revenues, you know, your franchisees, I mean, perhaps it might be 8%, it might be 12%, but it's a pretty good approximation. Same, same with your expenditures. Now, certain categories require a lot more research because in different cities, different counties, different states, it's very unique, and property taxes are one here in California where we actually look at the assessed value, going back to your tax rate area, going back to the city general fund. Sales taxes... Sales taxes, another unique one. You guys have Measure G. Measure G is not common, you know, and in effect, you're doubling it. So while the calculation is not hard to figure out sales tax generated, we do have to break it out separately. So that's the kind of thing we do on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, we look at police, infrastructure, stormwater, wastewater, roads. You know, so rather than just saying you're adding 10%, we're adding 10% to your public works budget. No, well, how much is it going to cost to maintain that new road? We maintain a database with really, really specific metrics, per lineal mile, per square foot, per street light. And we include a lot of those in the study, sort of a baseline. So that's sort of the dry part. This is a busy way to, you know, squawk out. So, you know, if we start with a sample city with 90,000 people, and this is very common, this is very much industry standard, employees we credit them is 50% of the residents, the theory being that they're there roughly, and we can argue about this, but roughly they're 50% of the time, 95, 99, whatever it is. They don't demand the same local services. They don't call a police chief as much, they don't call you guys as much. They're less of an impact on the city. So we arrive at a person serve metric, which is resident plus 50% of employees, and we multiply those by certain key budget categories to get a number that we apply to new development. And that's what we call multiplier. But really, all it is, what we're sort of capturing is that by the percentage we increase the population, the certain key costs and revenue categories are going to increase by the same percentage. So, but the key point of this slide is that we do include employees. So I just want to, a lot of people have questions about that. That might be particularly unique in a city like San Francisco where the daytime population swells to 2.5 million and the nighttime population is 900,000. So obviously, that creates a different burden during the day and that has sort of a different impact on streets, stormwater, public services, things such as that. Why are we only looking at operations and maintenance today? Well, the best way to put this is, the conversation tonight is just one element of a larger toolkit. You know, there is no silver bullet to fix your budget problems or your future budget problems. This is just sort of one tool, one arrow in the quiver. And, you know, what are some of those other ones? Impact fees. That would be how you address capital costs, because those get charged to new development to defray their capital costs, not their, impact fees can't touch operations and maintenance, just capital costs. So, you know, perhaps these two get layered in, and then you sort of have a strategy that covers both. So we focus on the recurring and the annual deficit or surplus to the city because it's, the general fund is really the discretionary element of your budget. You know, you have the ability to reevaluate water rates, sewer rates, if you sense there's a problem there, but with your general fund, you have to go and raise taxes, and that can be hard. So back to, so we're sort of jumping around, zooming in, zooming out. But the downtown specific plan, which we looked at specifically, here was the conclusion, right here, was that the downtown specific plan, because of the mix of residential, non-residential, actually is going to help your general fund. It's not going to be a drain. So not only is it going to be fiscally neutral, it's going to be fiscally positive. That assumes it all gets built out, it gets occupied, it gets in the east, and that crystal ball comes together. But, you know, so that is a critical conclusion. And sort of, you know, if we dig into that conclusion a little bit more, what we actually did, this was at Damien's request, is we sort of showed you what the average residential impact was and then what the non-res is. Now, your non-res is a little bit throttled up because of Measure G, you know, that may come back down the line in the future, but you can sort of see that residential, as Damien noted, is typically negative. And this is because, and I think you understand this very intuitively, resident, they call the police, they call police, they call fire, they call you guys, they call me, they call... Employees, businesses tend to be a little bit more self-contained, self-sustaining, they might hire their own. Security service, they tend to take care of their own business, so to speak. Now, there was a very famous policy paper written in the last five years called Fiscalization of Land Use. You guys may have come across this in the California cities or just heard it in other settings. And this is the very nature of the post Prop 13 is that, you know, on a spectrum, if you were to follow this advice, you'd probably only build auto malls and Amazon fulfillment centers. You would never build another house. So I do want to encourage somebody, you know, no one in the state of California would ever build another home if you took this to its extreme. So what it is, is it's not a guide for picking development, it's a guide for evaluating the impacts of that development. There is a difference, so. The conclusions we stated, I talk about the fiscalization of land use in the residential, just because of the services demanded, tends to be a drain on the general fund, and this is common. I've been approached by multiple cities in Sonoma County, I think it's all throughout California. This is sort of it right now. I mean, and it's been it especially for the last five years. So cities are struggling. They're doing better than they were five years ago, but costs are just outstripping revenues. So what we did here is we actually sort of broke it down on a per-unit basis, and I know these numbers may be high, they may be low. They're just, they are conclusions from the study at this point, and it was generally that a new home in Cotati is probably going to, you know, just by itself, will cost your general fund about $600. That would be an annual impact to your general fund for every new building program. Now, you're wondering, well, what happens if we add a non-residential? Well, if you just build a Starbucks, I think the Starbucks is going to be fine on its own. Well, if you build them together, you know, maybe we have to think a little bit more closely about that. But if we're just building homes, which we all know, you know, tends to be a little bit more profitable and also, you know, I think the office market, the retail market in Cotati and the submarket with Rudder Park could be doing better. I know the Chamber of Powers is working on it, but, you know, it's tough right now. You know, I think we're going to see a move towards residential development. So negative 600, so let's keep that in the background. So how do you get that? Or how do you begin to attempt to get that? We're not there yet, but how do you begin thinking about fixing that problem? Is every new home is 600, 600, 600, 600? And if you grant 100 building permits and there's no concession and you're just rezoning properties and to residential, your gap is just getting bigger and bigger every year. So we have some landscaping and lighting districts in town. You guys may or may not be familiar with, they're great mechanisms. I do a lot of them. I do parks in them all over the state. I administer them. They are clunky. They are really old and really clunky. Assessment districts are based on 1913, 1915 law originally. They are really, I mean, City Attorney, I don't know, you're, I love them, I use them, they work sometimes, but it's a limited list of things you can find. You have a nexus requirement, you have to do an engineer's report every year. I have multiple engineers on staff for a finance company. I don't know why, excuse me, anyway. So first is the community facilities district, which operates very similarly, in a lineup that goes in the property tax bill every year, it has an escalator built into it, but it's much more freeing in what you can fund and how you can fund it. Might be giving too much into the weeds here. The trade-off is that an assessment district has a 50% vote and a CFD has a 2/3 vote. And that's, so the higher vote, you get a little bit more freedom, the lower vote, you have some more restrictions, so. However, there is a tool in California that allows us to use the community facilities district for new development, and we get to sort of, not bypass, we do get the vote, but we do, we get the stream one. So legal requirements, escalation, we can jump back to any of these at the turn if you guys have any specific questions. So this is normally how we do it. This is how every city in California and western Mississippi is done. You have your city and you just start landmarking these all over the city. And you go through this process on the right, each person puts a deposit with you guys. We hire a taxing soul, which would be someone like me, you hire a bond counsel, you spend tens of thousands of dollars and you just have one, two, three, and start moving them all around the city. And you have to go through this process each and every time. What we're proposing specifically with the CFD, and it works similarly with the landscaping lighting district, but for further mechanism, is something called an annexable CFD, and you guys may be familiar with this. I hate the name, but that's what it is. An annexable CFD is really what it is, is we create one core CFD on a property. I'm going to show this graphically in just a second. I think it's going to make a lot more sense. And what we deem, and this is all spelled out in the Melrose Act, is we deem what is called a future annexationary, and that becomes the city boundaries. And any new property within the city that chooses to annex into the CFD, that wants to be a part of that, either through their conditions of approval or just because they want to, all they have to do is sign a letter. They sign a letter, they present it to you guys, and they're part of the CFD. And that's it. So we don't have to create a new CFD for them. We don't have to fight them, we don't have to chase them, they don't have to fight with us. It is just incredibly streamlined. And I feel like the graphic, okay, here's what we didn't pass the rules. So hopefully this works. So here's, you know, you can see the city boundary, this was the original area plan, and this was just where we started. And so this, the only area getting taxed, it was the only new development in the city. Let's see if this works. There we go. Well, that took me about eight hours. I didn't build it, but it's okay. And so the future annexationary is everything else within the city of Paso Robles. Now, it doesn't exist as a lien until there's new development, until they want to annex into it. So when a project comes up here, all they do is they sign a waiver, and now you have the same CFD here and here, or here, or here. There's no contingency, it's a contingency requirement, they don't have to be adjacent, and you don't have to revisit the process. So now you have the ability to bring new development into this mechanism incredibly quickly, incredibly painlessly. So we just did one in the city of San Francisco. That one's going to be a bond district. You can do this with bonds as well. They're going to issue about $2 billion of bonds, because these are some big office skyscrapers. That was pretty contentious. But it is, it's right there in the Melrose Act, and it's just a phenomenal tool to sort of breathe life into the fiscal impact study. So that's the way I like to think of it. So I think that, I sort of like this, so. I'll sort of leave it on that. Stand for any questions. Obviously, this can be, get pretty nuanced pretty quickly, so please.
Thank you. So I'll bring it back to council first, see if we have any questions. Yes, Councilman Delaso.
Lots.
Perfect.
I mean, I was going to interrupt you about six times, and I said, that's really rude, but I don't even know if I captured them all, so.
I talked really fast.
No, you do, and that's fine, and that's fine. So I'm just going to see which ones make sense, as I wrote them down. So obviously, the CFD has to be set up in advance, and I don't mean in advance of development, but like right now, if the council wanted to move on something, we could go through that process and set one up that would cover the entire city boundaries. We don't have, there's not a lot of open land in the city limits of Cotati, obviously, but we could set that up, and that's both for commercial and residential.
Yes, it could. Or it could be residential only, and I'd probably recommend both.
Right.
But yes.
Yeah, okay. So I just want to make sure I'm following that in the right progression, so that was sort of a yes?
Yes.
Yes, it was a yes.
I'm false.
No, that's okay.
You know, just to make sure, I would caveat up by just saying that there would need to be a project that's moving forward through the entitlement process
Okay.
to create the core CFD. In other words, the council can't just go do it on its own with no project attached.
We would have something attached.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly. So that's, thank you for reiterating that. You mentioned the cost of the general fund of just a new residence through the formula, which we had in our pack, and it was about 600 bucks. So my question on that is, how many years out does that play? Is that in perpetuity?
It can't, the CFD or the study? So they're very related.
Well, I'm talking, yeah, okay, so I don't know if I'm putting the question the right way, but this cost of $600 per residential unit through the, this DSP that we went through, you know, are you looking at $600 a year for five years, 10 years, 30 years?
It can be time limited if the council wants, or it can go out of line in perpetuity.
But in your calculations, what did you take into account?
The study reviews the project at buildup. So we assume that the DSP is on the ground and existing. We do not typically do what are called dynamic fiscal impact studies, which are year over year, because then you just end up fighting about escalation.
Sure.
So we sort of say, we're going to pretend it's all 20, $15, if it were here right now.
Got it.
This is where you would be. And then if we want to escalate, we do that within the CFD. It can be CPI, it can be a flat 2%, and we could have the ability to escalate it.
Okay, so the snapshot in time is to do this right now, you're looking at $600 a residential unit
Right, right.
as a ballpark.
And that includes Measure G.
That includes Measure G. Does it include a critical part of the formula, in my opinion, and I couldn't really find this in the documentation, does it include the fact that those residents are generating money for the city? There's not just property taxes, there's assuming sales taxes.
Sales taxes from their purchases, yes, it's included.
Okay, so that's included in there? So you base that on just some kind of a formula and percentage?
Well, that's a great question. We typically base it on, it's called the mortgage approach. We analyze the projected cost of the home and we use consumer survey data to figure out what their income would be and how much they spent on retail purchases. And there's actually really good data out there. It's pretty interesting. People below certain income bands tend to spend more on retail purchases, and then it's sort of a bit of a bar bet. And then people at the really high end spend a lot on, but everyone in the middle actually tends to be. So we do do that, and I believe that would be in tab five, in the exhibits in the back.
Tab five. I will look for that, thank you. Because, yeah, to me, residents generate business, which is sales tax. So when we're talking about the model at its extreme, I just want to make sure that was calculated in, and it sounds like it was.
Yes, and I think what you're touching on is that we would never build a home if we took this, you know.
Well, right, right. And that was a statement you made, so, okay. I have more, but I will defer to my colleagues and pass the buck for a minute.
And really quick, because I'm sure it's going to come in just a second. You know, we have to use conservative assumptions, because, you know, once you guys set this up, you sort of really have one bite at the apple, to set it up like this. You can set up multiple ones and we can park mark the city, but if we're going to do this like this, you can always scrap it and do it five years from now, but you want to protect yourselves. And you sort of, you use this in effect to create a policy of fiscal neutrality. And you sort of say, listen, you really have to prove to us that you're fiscally positive. And that's, and you really put the burden on someone else.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilman Harvey?
I just have one question based upon what he asked. So you said you included Measure G, even though it has a limited
Right.
timeframe on it. So, put another way, you're assuming that that stays forever. Okay.
So, actually, let me jump in there.
Thanks.
You got it about that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and the conclusion, as I recall, was because of the term, because it extended beyond five years, that the common practice in these kind of fiscal impact studies is to assume that they are in place, not because, not because there's any assumption that it was really going to live forever, but it's just the common practice in the fiscal impact study to assume that revenues that are in place for longer than five years are in effect in place for the study.
But on the flip side of that, then, that would mean that some of these numbers would look much worse without that.
Agree, agree.
Okay.
I, you know, I think any fiscal impact, you know, it's both arm and science, and I think if you are perfectly blunt, if you were to leave that out, I think that would sort of be a big bull's eye on your study and on your process. And I think we wanted to provide something that was conservative to the city, but that was also reasonable, in that you could approach the development community and say, this is where we are. And that was sort of my sense, so.
Okay. Councilmember Herndon.
Well, thank you, Nathan. I think we're all kind of circling around the same question here. So first of all, I'm not surprised to hear, we've always basically believed it's a general understanding in cities that development, particularly residential, is a net negative in the long term for us, although the developers that develop residential feel strongly the other way as amazingly enough. But it's good, seriously, to see this quantified, because that's helpful for us, it gives us a better sense to base judgment on. So I guess I have two questions, and the first is that, obviously, this is just a model, and as we just pointed out, for example, making the assessment the way this is typically done, that the revenues you have now will stick, but knowing that Measure G is not designed to stick, even though it goes out past five years, obviously, that model can change. And I guess my question is if a model might occasionally need adjustment, or if it's underlying assessment, any part of the formula, or the parts of the formula put together in there could change, what structure there is to reassess that, to make sure that you maintain that fiscal neutrality? Because that strikes me as something that's important, both to make sure that we do this correctly and also to make sure it's done reasonably, if that's a direction it's chose to be followed.
I mean, that's a great question, and from the implementation standpoint, that's a $64,000 question. We can always update the model. We can update the model next year. If Measure G falls off, we can pull.
But once you establish this CFD, then you can't.
Once we establish it, it becomes, you know, unless you're going to layer on a second CFD, which is sort of a bit of an optics nightmare, if you will, once you set it, the documentation and disclosure associated with that CFD really does become baked.
It would be, yeah.
And we can, again, most of these, every city includes an escalator in there because you want to predict for those variations and those fluctuations moving forward. But once we pick a number, we disclose that. By the way, the number that we bake into the CFD is called maximum special tax. Council always retains the authority to charge less than that.
Helpful.
If Cattati becomes flush from cash, someone, you know, just pops out $10 million, you guys, no, we saw this a lot during the session, a lot with waivers of impact fees, very similar.
Right, right.
Okay, we're just going to roll it back for three years, it's a tough time. You guys will always retain that authority. But meanwhile, the maximum.
So we have at least some flexibility in one half of the coin. We can, if we find that we're a little, not as lean as we could be, we can do that. That's good to hear. And I agree, certainly, wherever we design, we've learned, we have a variety of landscaping and lighting districts, and some of them aren't rolling costs. And we've learned, that doesn't leave a lot of value for our citizens, and it's a big headache for all of us as we go down the road. So we want to avoid that. That makes a lot of sense. Last question for you, Mr. Perez. This is something new for me. And I see we mentioned Ronard Park in here. I'm curious, it looks like this has a longer history than I realize. How long has this concept been around in place? Or is it typical for communities to do an annexable CFD that covers most of the city limits?
So the Melrose Act itself, 1982, that was really sort of focused toward bond districts. And, you know, I love bond districts. You want to find out some infrastructure? But the services elements really became, I think, fleshed out in 87. I think that's really when this concept became, really had some teeth. It was always sort of meant to be the corollary to the landscaping and lighting district, which I believe is 1972, the 1972 Act. But they became, I think, used in the early 2000s after the dot com bubble. So what is this? This is 2005, actually. And this, so I think that is, it's really more product of the last 10 years. We started hearing it at the legal California cities and seeing consultants starting to put it on their.
We just want to get a chance to see if there was a track record, if we're on the bleeding edge or somewhere in between. And specifically to the issue of doing the citywide annex, CFD, annexable CFD.
They're certainly out there. I mean, just.
So that's not atypical if that's.
It's not atypical, just one city in the future city. Sorry. Livermore, I mean, San Francisco just finished.
Okay.
It is not actually citywide. It is within a region of the city, but it's the same structure, the annexation area, people south of market. So everything's south of market, then comes into some high value real estate. You know, I had a lot of discussions with the city of Hillsburg, also. They had a growth management ordinance in place, and they were curious how they would intersect. But not bleeding edge, not so, you know, certainly not the lanes of landscaping and lighting districts yet, but I think the mechanism is better, so we'll get it.
Well, I'd certainly like to avoid the problems we've had in the past with that that has really resulted in impacts for the neighborhoods. And I would like to avoid, how did you put it, building Amazon fulfillment centers and Walmarts only? That might not go over well, and I personally wouldn't think we're doing our job well, so.
No, I mean, what is AutoWalls? I mean, AutoWalls and Costco's is all you would ever have if you followed these principles out. So I'm a big believer in these principles, but you have to use them to be protecting yourself, to fund services and to fund police and fire. You shouldn't be using them as a weapon to sort of, you know, drive a policy, so.
Thank you.
And I'll also add, too, that Cattati's small enough, unlike, you know, a city like San Francisco, which creates a region, regional CFD within the city. We're small enough that we could create a citywide one because the impacts are relatively similar throughout the city. And the intent, you know, the intent for the annex, annexable CFD or annexation area is that after you go through the trouble of setting it up the first time, it really makes it much easier, from a developer's perspective, I think primarily, they don't have to go through all the cost and time and trouble of forming a new one every time a new development comes along. Or if you have, for example, a really small residential subdivision of a, you know, couple units, you know, having them form their own CFD is, I think, overly burdensome. But if you have one standing, they can annex into it, it's just more streamlined.
And they do, they do have to annex into it. So, you know, you talk CFDs, and a lot of people go, "Oh, make it my add, developer, real loaded in." They have to vote, they have to come to you and present it to you. So this is, you know, it requires 100 percent unanimous vote. It just doesn't require a second formation process, so. And then also during the summers, we don't have the same kind of annual reauthorization and engineers reports and nexus study issues, which I spend my entire April every year doing those. It's just, this is cleaner from an administration standpoint. So perhaps you set it at 2 percent or CPI, you know, escalates, and then every person, depending on when they come in, you know, will pick it up, and everyone will play the same parade, and, you know, some of them will pay the longer. But again, only new development, no existing residents or tech.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Thanks, Nate. It's quite a concept. The Community Facilities District has to be voted on prior to the implementation of a project.
No, the project.
Yeah, well, during the entitlement phase, they would form it, yeah, maybe before any construction begins, yeah.
And this is the vote of the people?
The vote of the property owners.
Just the vote of the property owners?
Yeah, unless there are more than 12 registered voters on the land, in which it would become a registered voter election.
Open to the whole?
All the registered voters within the boundaries of the city.
Okay.
Which in this case could be the entire city, yes.
So for new development, I mean, the typical process would be that there's an entity that owns all of, controls all the properties within the development.
Right.
Or a person. And that person or entity would cast all the votes for them, you know, for all the properties within the boundaries of that subdivision, for example. And then that would be the vote that would carry it and create the formation.
And then very stringent disclosure requirements on that property owner moving forward as he sells off the property, to the home builders, or the retail developers, and then eventually homeowners.
Because that would carry with him, have a purchase of property to enter up.
And in Ronard Park, for instance, we were setting up a gigantic, you know, house makers, it's going to be 13,000 homes, 78,000. But right now, it's just one person voting, so.
You're not going for the Amazon fulfillment centers?
Not on that one. I love plenty, but they're.
That's right. And what kind of opposition has it run to, or has it running?
You know, I think a lot of the opposition to CFDs generally, I think, is, you know, you have an anti-tax sentiment, and I think people object. And, you know, I think rather, so I think one thing we need to remember is that it is only new development. It is not the city registered voter base. You do have people come forward and, you know, become angry about taxes they're not paying that other people are paying. But, you know, I think it's a timing issue. And because of Prop 13, we're sort of forced into this increasing gap, and we only have, we have very limited tools to rectify or mitigate it. And I think it becomes a question of just implementing the tool or not. It is, you know, it is a tax. I think from a home builder and a developer perspective, they don't tend to care as much. And this is just working for them, because ultimately, you know, they may pay it for a year.
They're going to pass it on.
Right, they're going to pass it on. And, you know, I think the homeowners within those districts who are paying it, within those sort of pockets, you know, may or may not appreciate it. I think if they're getting the value for it, they sense the value.
Yeah, that's true. So you haven't seen it as an impediment to developing?
If they're getting value. If they're, if they just feel like the $600 is going straight, you know, straight general fund to covering someone else's salary, and that there's no palpable improvement, increase or attractiveness associated with their district or their city because of it, I think that's when it fails. And I think that's also when landscaping and lighting districts fail. Recently got hired in the city of East Bay, these two homeowners associations just, I mean, the city's just taking the money, you know, and not even bothering to show the account statements. And, you know, they recognize that there's going to be, you know, maybe not dollar for dollar going into the ground or paying for the lease. But, you know, if there's some compromise, I think that's the key, and I think people are appreciative of that. But it's really when it's abused, and you see that pretty rarely. But, you know, if you do, people do have the right to vote it out, and then you have the right to come to you, and you have the right to vote it out as well, so.
So you could have it in a district for all 10 years, and down the road, those members of that district could vote it out.
They would have to convince you, yeah, yeah.
And the council would have the authority to vote it out.
They would have the authority.
But not, but not the participants?
The participants.
Once they're in, they're in.
Right, right. Because it would be this sort of springy citywide one. If the entire city didn't come out and voted against it, they could throw it. I don't think you're going to see that. Practical matter, because they're.
Well, there's not a lot of things you'd see that are practical in Cattati. And then you talked a little bit about bonds, and typically, those are more in the bigger arenas.
Right, right. Right, and so what you would see is you could use this exact same structure. And what we would do is we would call it a tax A and a tax B. And you would have your A tax, that $600 or some portion of that, fund services, and go, you know, go towards helping the city mitigate the shortfall. And then you would have a B tax, and we'd use a portion of that B tax coming from the same property. We aggregate it and securitize and issue bonds against it. They'd be taxing them bonds, and you'd get a great rate. You could use those bonds for infrastructure, groundwater, new roads, police station, fire station, anything like that. I know the fire station's separate. Mentioned fire, I know, I know they're their own district. But, you know, that is something that we do. The annual charge goes out. And so then it becomes a negotiation. I mean, if people like the infrastructure, and the infrastructure becomes, you know, an important part of that district or that community or that specific plan or building, I think people will be okay with that. But if we just charged $2,000 for a home, which by the way, many cities do just for services, I just thought one, Alameda last Tuesday night, $2,000 per new building permanent. That was just for services, another $2,000 on top of that in bonds. So absolutely. And we can do it within the same structure as well, and be very clean. We probably need an higher amount to make it what you want.
Yeah, to justify it, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did you have any follow-up questions? Because you said, okay.
I have one more question.
Yes, Councilman Harvey?
You just mentioned that fact that our fire is a separate assessment district. What, if anything, do we need to consider since they aren't part of the city?
Right, well, you know, from a services perspective, they could do something like this on their own, actually, by the way. Maybe that's a bit overkill on multiple people, but you could, they could. If it were a bond, if we were looking at bonds, we could have a, it's called J.C. Avant Community Facilities Agreement, where we basically agree to start the proceeds. And we identify some path and some mechanism to share the proceeds. The money can be shared, it's just the negotiation process of getting it right and binding both parties. The services side is tough, I'll be honest, because it goes out in perpetuity, most likely. The bonds are easier, because it's 30 years, you get all the cash upfront, and then you figure out how to split the cash. And then the debt, so that's really the tension, is figuring out, is this little agreement going to mine into the next century? So, but the same options available. And recently, last month, Figgarque Architecture District in Fresno, we went out, services CFD, they were closing a fire station. They had more than 12 registered voters, and we were actually forced to a vote. Not forced, we went to a vote, and we won. So, I mean, sometimes, you know, you do win when you're involved, but it's hard to get 66 percent of people agree.
Okay, thank you. So I was going to ask a quick mechanical question before I open up to public comment. Since we're receiving and filing, do we need to make a motion to receive and file? Or do we just, okay, fantastic, there we go, my mechanical question's answered. So I wanted to see if we'll open up to public. Yes?
I just wrote one more thing. I think this is very dense. I mean, I do all the repetitive CFDs. This is the annexable scenario, I think, but we just didn't break it. So I think if the very first meeting would have been, it's called a resolution intention meeting, where you vote to sort of initiate the CFD process, we would have brought this. I think there'd be a lot of head scratching everywhere, but it's not a comment on anyone. It's just, it's a lot, I think you need some time to digest it. Davey, I know, works every weekend, so just get him questions or get me questions, and I'd be happy to follow them up, so.
Okay, thank you. So I'll open it up to public comment on the review of the Community Facilities District fiscal impact study. Yes, Mr. Berge?
Thank you, Mayor. Nate's presentation was very good, but it should be known that this is not a new concept. This goes back many years, as Nate said, to my recollection, back to the early 2000s. It was Community Development Director Marcia Sue Ludwig, along with David Waltering, that brought through, that brought forward the concept of the community impact study. And how important that is to go along with the environmental impact report. We had a CIR and the need to have a CIR to complement the EIR. And we brought consultants in to talk about it, which would have led to what Nate is talking about tonight eventually. But either the council didn't get it, or they didn't understand it, and we've kicked the can down the road, and we're in this situation now where we're almost at a necessity to implement something like this. One of the reasons I voted against the downtown specific plan is I asked many of the same questions that Nate asked tonight, specifically about the analytics. Because the analytics were missing from the discussion on the downtown specific plan, of which I was the lone no vote, because the council wasn't ready, didn't know what they were getting themselves into. And in this discussion between city manager and Nate here, he probably knows that out of the $73 million downtown specific plan projected cost, we have received about $1 million for the intersection project going on right now. So we've got about another $72 million to go. But nobody wanted to ask what is the community impact of the downtown specific plan, or Cattati cottages, or, or all these other developments. But here we are tonight. And I understand that some of you weren't here for these discussions. Some of you are home, raising families, at the library, you know, meetings and so forth, you weren't here. But we discussed these types of issues. It's evolved to what Nate is talking about tonight, but it, but we did talk about it. And it was summarily ignored by council members in years past, either because they couldn't understand it, or they didn't understand that we would maybe approach a financial hardship, economic times down the road, and the money would stop coming in, or the redevelopment money would someday cease to come in, and sales tax increases would have a definite ending. And people would believe, you know, Bob Coleman, when he said, "Just give us this money one time and for five years, and that's it." You know, so this is a little bit old news. I think you're on the right track of looking at this, at least. But this is not our case of first impression here.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to make public comments? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment on this issue. And thank you very much for your time this evening, coming and making presentation. Appreciate it. So there's no action to take? I'm a little out of my, okay, very good. So then we'll move on to item five.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Oh, sure.
I have a question for staff. I wanted to get a clarification on that. In talking about the downtown specific plan, I've heard this bantering about of $73 million for umpteen years, and it's ad nauseam at this point. There's never been a projected $73 million cost to the city of Cattati for a downtown specific plan, has there? Could you clarify that for me? Maybe Ms. Parker could clarify that?
Yeah, so the cost is for all of the related improvements, public and private?
Right, and if businesses were to come in and to develop in there, et cetera?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to item five, recommendation to Sonoma County Mayors and Council Members Association for various appointments, and I was happy to see that we have the exact number of people interested in the spots as we do spots available.
It's too bad.
So, do we want to have a presentation and discussion, or should we just move forward to?
No, I don't need a couple of variables.
I understand that, you know, we have some people that were fairly questionable, throwing in their names into the ring, but, okay. So before I go any further, I'll open up to public comment, if anybody's interested in commenting on the people who are putting forth their names for the different appointments available. All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council.
If there's no comment, I'd like to adopt both the motion, we support the choices from the, the listed choices from the Sonoma County City Council members who submitted letters of interest for appointment for Sonoma County Mayors and Council Members Association, Board of Directors for positions to the stated advisory bodies.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, way the record showed, that's a 5-0 vote in favor of the recommended names, and that'll be very easy for me to do, thank you. I'll move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, a couple of things tonight. One is Rancho Cattati's Project Grad, so we're graduation night is coming up. That graduation event is scheduled for this Friday night, June 5th at 9:30 PM, I'm told. And the event runs until...
Next Friday. That'd be next Friday.
Next Friday.
Yeah.
Yeah. The event runs until 05:00 in military time. That's really early, yeah. And the reason why I bring it up, aside from general information, is that Cattati PD is assigning two officers to this event, and their time there is paid for by a grant with Sonoma County Department of Health Services, who funds that, so. That's very nice. And then also, last, this last weekend, Memorial Weekend, was the Avoid the 13 DUI Task Force checkpoint, which we had in Cattati, on East Cattati Avenue, near La Plaza. And that checkpoint was set up Friday night, last Friday night, and it had 1,095 vehicles travel through it, and 1,093 vehicles were screened, I'm not sure actually what happened to the other two. Yeah, I don't know, they evaporated somewhere between the checkpoint and the screening. But 19 were taken aside for DUI evaluations, 29 were taken aside for driver's license-related issues, and three DUI offenders were arrested, and there was two at the checkpoint, and then one in a follow-up saturation patrol that evening. So it's great, we got some people that were driving under the influence off the road Friday night, so that's always a good thing. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, otherwise, that's it for tonight.
That was great. Is it true, Madam Mayor, too, that I heard it was hosted by the Public Safety Office in Runner Park? Is that true? Was that a nixle?
That is incorrect.
That is incorrect, okay.
Yeah. The DUI checkpoint was hosted by the city of Cattati, there was a separate, unannounced DUI checkpoint hosted by the city of Runner Park, in their city somewhere.
Interesting, how that works, wow. That's great, you know what, I happened to see the chief at the market the next day, and I asked him for these numbers, so I got these numbers, right? And, you know, it's not a while, so we pulled three DUI drivers off the road, but I sat there and thought about that, it's like, wow, we pulled three off the road. That could have, you know, there could have been a lot of serious injuries, loss of life, and derailment of so many different people from friends and family, that it's great, it's great, that if there was three out there and we got three off the road, that's great. So good job.
All right, does anybody else want to ask comments or questions on the city manager's report?
I just wanted to follow up. Speaking of Project Grad, I just got an email today, they are looking for volunteers, if anyone's available. I've worked it before, it's a great event, and hopefully it keeps other mayhem off the road.
Again, since that project started countywide in, somewhere in the late 80s, early 90s, there has not been one graduating senior in Sonoma County who was killed, because there's been a lot that have been killed on graduation night since that event has taken place. And not everybody participates, I know when I did it for six years, it was 75 to 80% participation. And even all those kids, it's like, ah, I don't really want to go to that, it's not going to be fun at all, they had the best time of their lives that one night. So it's one night that they were safe, and, again, baby steps maybe sometimes, but maybe they'll remember it, so it's a great event.
It is.
Okay. So I'll see, is there any public comment on the city manager's report, two items? Nope, okay. Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it over to city council reports. So start with Councilmember Harvey.
I just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of, the Waste Management Agency has made a settlement with Renali, and the settlement agreement was finalized and signed by all the parties last Thursday night. It's a public document and can be requested. One of the key conditions of the settlement is that the agency closed the existing compost facility, which was the subject of the lawsuit. So the agency will begin the process of closing the compost operation once the settlement is approved by the court, so the court has to approve it first. This decision was made reluctantly, and a lot of time was spent to try and find a solution to allow the existing facility to remain open, but in the end, the agency did not have a solution that would eliminate the stormwater from the existing facility prior to the next rainy season, which was required under the regulatory approvals and the joint defense and indemnity agreement between the agency and the county. So given all those facts, it was felt that that was in the best interest of the agency and the ratepayers to go ahead and resolve the lawsuit and begin the process of closing the existing facility. So that was not an easy decision, and hopefully we will be able to move forward in selecting a new site and getting a new facility built. In the meantime, once it closes, we will have to outhaul the compost for the period time until the new facility is built, and then it will be brought back in. So I can answer questions, but...
Actually, through the chair, if I might, yeah, I share your disappointment, that's not the outcome I think anybody wanted to see, and I just wanted to suggest my first reaction is with that outcome, I feel really strongly about protecting the JPA going forward in terms of best representation for counties going forward and try to get back to something that is beneficial in terms of not having to actually outhaul our waste, to then bring it back as mulch. And I think the best way to do that will be protecting that JPA, so I just wanted to share that reaction.
Yeah, I agree with you, because that was one of the questions that people asked about was, well, if we outhaul it, can we bring, can we bring it back? Well, that's not an easy thing to do. You have to have a place to bring it, a place to sell it, a place, you know, the same problems sort of exist, so it's really bad for like, a lot of individuals, residents, as well as farmers and things like that, because there's not a good way to be able to do that in the interim.
It's absolutely no solution at all, it should be done here, and I'm sure there's ways to do it, and hopefully it won't be, the story I saw quoted is whoever will do this will have to be somebody with big, big bucks, I believe was the quote, and I'm hoping that's not necessarily the case, because I don't know if that really works for the best outcome either. You know, privatization sometimes work, sometimes it doesn't, and we have a model that, other than this one interesting issue that was brought to fore, was some really good legal representation. I think we have something that can be a benefit for this county, I'd like to see us get back to it.
Yeah, as Nate kind of pointed out in his presentation, it doesn't necessarily have to be a private thing, there, that we could do some different things in order to finance it, so they are looking at that as a possibility, but it has to be able to be done, and we're talking about, you know, some $40 million.
I'd be very interested in seeing the direction where that comes from and who that comes from, and I'd look, again, JPA's guided us through some, Waste Management JPA has guided us through some pretty good things and came up with some pretty good results, so I'd really be interested in seeing the direction they'd like to see us go from here.
More to come.
Vice Mayor Moore?
I do not.
Okay. Councilwoman Lemon?
Nor do I.
Councilwoman Delasa?
Yes, thank you. Last Wednesday, I went down to Petaluma for the presentation made by Supervisor Rabbit, and he was peppered quite heavily with some questions there, there were some interesting folks on fluoride issues, and the bigger discussion was about Measure A and, you know, what's going on with this Measure A, and, you know, he did break it out by saying 56% of the dollars generated in that five-year period is going back to the cities based on a formula, and he said, I thought he threw out some numbers, I want to say Santa Rosa was around, projected around $5 million, Petaluma about 1.9 million, and then he turns and looks at me and he goes, John, do you remember how much Cattati, which I had no clue, because I've never heard a dollar figure, so I just, I did this, because it's basically, it's based on, you know, well, whatever they based it on, but, you know, percentages, we would be much smaller, so. I didn't want to throw out a figure to commit to anything, so I was hoping it would be a little higher than that. And then, so that was on Wednesday evening, and then Thursday evening, I know a bunch of us were down at Exchange Bank for their grand reopening there. It's the third oldest exchange bank in their system here in Cattati, 74 years here in Cattati, so that was pretty cool.
And the only bank in Cattati.
Pardon me? And the only bank in Cattati. And the only bank in Cattati, that is correct, but that's all I had. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I could, through the chair, before we move away from Councilmember Delasa's comments, thank you for the report, I heard about that, I heard what she shared with me, and I just, since it relates to this, I want to share this came before the Board of Supervisors, or was scheduled to come before them, the long-awaited issue of fluoridation of the county's drinking water that we visited years ago now. And the bottom line, there's a little guessing and spitballing here, but I'll go out in line and say, I think it's dead. This was pulled, this was pulled with no timeline to bring it back, and for an outside person observing, that tells you that, with the assumption, the reasonable assumption that perhaps staff would like to see this go forward, that means either one, it was not likely to pass, or two, nobody wanted to see it. And looking at the timeline of elections, current elections, incoming elections, I would be very surprised to see something that might be recognized as controversial come forward, so I think that it was a long time coming, but for now, your vote carried the day, so I wanted to share that with all of you.
And I will say that the supervisor's remarks, when point-blank asked, how would you support this, he says, well, you know, I've gone online saying that I will, you know, I'm in favor and I do support this concept, but wearing my hat as a member of the Board of Sonoma County Water Agency, he goes, I don't see how we could implement such a system, so it's like, okay, well, that canceled itself out, I kind of see where that direction was going, so.
It's wonderful to be in a position where you can agree with everybody, that's a good thing, good place to be.
Pretty rare.
Okay, and then the only thing I was going to report was actually the ribbon cutting. And then also just a heads up, on June 10th, I've been told there's going to be a ribbon cutting for the new downtown restaurant stacks, so just to put it on folks' radars. And with that, I will conclude this meeting at 8:42, thank you very much.